This evening, we are pleased to have with us Padma Kuppa, who is the Outreach Chairperson from the Bharatya Temple, and she's going to provide us with the invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Padma. No, right there.
I will be saying the Hindu invocation prayers in English first, and then in Sanskrit, which is the ancient language, just as Latin is the language of the Christian scripture or the Catholic scripture. Om, may the Lord protect us. May he help us to enjoy together. May he help us to work together. May we be thorough and faithful in what we do. May we not quarrel. Om, sahnaavatu, sahnaavunaktu, sahaviryam karavahay, tejasvinavadi tamastu, mavitvishavahey. Om, shanti, shanti, shanti.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Padma. Always nice to see you. May we have the roll call, please, Mrs. Plata?
Mayor Shelling.
Here.
Councilmember Beltrameini.
Here.
Fleming, Howellack.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
And Slater.
Here.
Coram present.
And Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameini.
Mayor Proton Fleming is out of town on business this evening, and he has asked to be excused, so I would move that resolution so that people can vote how they please.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Protim Wade Fleming at the regular city council meeting of Monday, July 26, 2010, and the full session of Monday, July 26, 2010, due to being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Mayor Shelling.
No.
Councilmember Beltrameini.
Yes.
Howellack.
Yes.
Kerwin.
No.
McGinnis.
Yes.
And Slater.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our presentations, and I know it says for our state representative, Mary Nolenberg, to go first, and then members of the temple. Would you mind if I switch the order?
No.
Party, is that all right?
Why?
Why?
Because we have young people. Pardon?
Wouldn't it be helpful for them to stay and hear what he has to say?
All right. Can you stay for a while? Is it all right with the children? Okay, thank you. Our state representative, Mary Nolenberg, for the 41st District, is going to give us the legislative update, and we decided it'd be helpful if the audience could hear that, and then maybe you'll stay and hear their presentation.
Well, I'm staying anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't make no difference to me, but thank you for giving me this opportunity to give you an update about what's happening in Lansing, a few of the topics that I hope to talk about. I hope I don't run out of time, but, you know, we certainly have a road crisis in the state, and I want to address that issue. Certainly, our police departments are hurting as well, and I've got a bill that I'd like to address on that. And certainly, protecting our kids as a result of the marijuana law that passed two years ago, I'd like to address that. If I had time, I'll address the homeowner bill that I'm working on. But before I do that, I want to start off with a little bit of unsettling news. My legislative aide, Chutley Zarco, passed away last week. He was a young man, 39 years old. He was a resident of the 41st District. He lived in Colosseum for about five years. He worked on my campaign for two cycles and knew the district, knew the people that lived in the district, understood both Republicans and Democrats, independents, and had a great feel for the district. He handled all my constituent work, and for the residents of Troy, they're going to miss him because he was very responsive, very intelligent, very respectful of, I think, the 41st District, and it leaves a big hole in my legislative office. And I'm going to miss him also because he was my friend. And so, we're going to have to find someone to replace him. It's going to be difficult, but we'll still try to provide the same level of service that we have always provided. We have a challenge in front of us in that regard. Moving on, you know, we all know that as people purchase more fuel-efficient vehicles and do the economy, people aren't driving as far, the tax collections from the fuel tax is going down. And so, we have challenges in meeting our road funding requirements, certainly our matching funds from the federal government, just they have to come up with 20 percent. And while I think we can get there with the current budget, there doesn't seem to be a will to, you know, cut the spending or the other option, we raising taxes, which I don't think anybody wants to do that in this cycle. So, there are other things that we need to do, and I've come up with a package, actually, your city manager gets most of the credit here. He approached me and said, you know, we have money for road projects. You know, we'd like to be able to put up 20 percent, but we want to make sure we're going to get the 80 percent back. And while this is not a Plan A, if the state can't step up and fulfill its obligation, then we need to have a Plan B. So, I put together a package that would allow local communities to be able to put up 20 percent so we don't lose that 80 percent match. And there's going to be some communities that can't come up with the 20 percent, but there's a lot that can. And City of Troy, you know, Proton and my understanding is that you have money, that is satisfied for those kinds of projects. I have bipartisan support on this. I just introduced it just before the Fourth of July break, so I mentioned it to the chairman, and I think she'll take it up. We have to have a discussion on road funding, so I think it's a step in the right direction. I've also talked to Robin in her service with the Michigan Municipal League, and she's trying to do some work there, too, to, you know, push this thing forward. Local police departments, this is actually another bill I submitted, another bipartisan bill, came from a police officer in Troy, and the situation is this: When the police department comes into possession of a weapon, whether it's due to a case and the weapon's no longer needed as evidence, or a homeowner simply comes upon a weapon, maybe, you know, her husband passed away, or a spouse passed away, they don't have a need for this weapon. Under the current law today, for weapons, if they're turned into the police department or they're in a police department's possession, they're sent to state police, and the state police then melts the weapons. And these weapons oftentimes are in perfectly good shape. They can be used. Some of these weapons are collector items. They're old weapons, and so we're not changing the law as to who would obtain them. It would go to auction. The same laws would still apply, the same rules would still apply, but you would just allow more of these weapons to go to market in these auctions. So, and as a result, these weapons that are sold at these auctions, the revenues would stay locally. And I think it's a win-win. I think the police department wins, and I think those that want to purchase these weapons wins as well. So, again, bipartisan support. I've got a lot of law enforcement people that are very supportive of it. The chairman of the committee has told me that he would take it up as well. You know, recently, the marijuana law that passed two years ago, you know, we know how dangerous it can be if it is in the wrong hands, such as kids. And we recently had a case here in Troy where an individual failed to register an sex offenders list, and when he was pulled in to the police department, not only did he fail to register, but he was living within a thousand feet of his school. In fact, his home backed up to his school. And this person has a, it's not a sex offenders list as a result of a felony, so it's not a minor case. It's a major case. And so, under the current law, and let me back up, and when pressed as to what he did for, as an occupation, it was found that he was a caregiver of marijuana. And under the current law, if you have a drug-related felony, you're prohibited from being a caregiver. But if he had any other kind of felony, whether, you know, something like a rape, or armed robbery, or mass murder, or any major violent felony, you could be, you know, released from jail, and then the next day, apply for a medical care license and distribute marijuana. And so, I think that's just wrong. It's a loophole that we're trying to close. I have good bipartisan support on that. Again, it's going to protect our kids. Finally, my homeowner bill, I think I'm kind of going over time, but we all know that the real estate market has been devastating to a lot of individuals. Many people are selling their homes at a loss. Many people are foreclosed on homes. I've introduced the bill, bipartisan support. Tim Melton is my co-sponsor, is my sponsor of the two-bill package. He's a sponsor of one and a sponsor of the other. Essentially, what this would do is allow a homeowner to deduct a loss of a home. So, if you sold the home, if you bought a home for $100,000 and you sold it for 90, okay, you can't write that off because it's your principal residence. If it were a stock, mutual fund, limited partnership, business investment, you could write that off up to $3,000. So, in this case, the most you can write off is $3,000. Now, it could be carried forward, much like other investments that one might make. And I just think that people that, who are forced to sell a home at a loss, they ought to get a little benefit as a result of that. Maybe they'll buy another home, lesser value, but at least it helps the homeowner around. So, that's the end of my pitch. We're certainly trying to get the budget, you know. We completed all the budgets are in conference. We had the school aid budget out just before we left. I'm optimistic that we'll get something done. There seems to be an effort to, you know, it's election year, as we all know, and so I think we're making some progress, you know, given the Fourth of July break and the election coming up. It's still trying to come up for an agreement.
Okay.
If there's any questions, I'm, you know, willing to stand.
Okay, thank you. Council have questions? Councilwoman Kerwin?
You mentioned the Fourth of July break. When does that end?
I beg your pardon?
The Fourth of July break, when does that end? When are you guys back?
We went back last week.
Okay.
Yeah, so the budgets are still in conference, and so we had two weeks, took a two-week break. So, we were back last week. They're working on them.
So, when do you anticipate votes on some of the things that you mentioned? When do you anticipate votes on some of the things you mentioned going to committee?
Well, a lot of the committees are, there's been limited committee hearings, but we've had some floor action on bills that have gone through committee. I suspect that I'll see some hearings on my bills that just mentioned, maybe April for sure, September.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Present for an update for us. And now, we're going to have a presentation by youngsters from the members of the Bharatya Temple to promote their temples festival, which is the Anand Bazaar. It's a fun-filled family event, Sunday, August 1st through the, is that correct?
Yes. The kids are going to talk about it, but first, let me introduce some of the people who are here from the temple.
Yes.
First, we have Roman Pipatail. Mr. Patail is next year's temple president and also this year's chair of Anand Bazaar. We have this year's temple president, Dr. Indrajit Saini, and our joint secretary, Mr. Devi. And with us, we have Abhi Parik and Vinita Desai, who are going to introduce to, we have some goodies, but they're going to tell you a little bit about what happens at Anand Bazaar.
So, we are here to introduce Anand Bazaar.
Would you move the mic up a little bit for yourself there? Thank you.
The Bharatya Temple will be holding Anand Bazaar, a festival similar to how they hold Opa Fest, and it's a fun-filled family event, which will be held at the Bharatya Temple in Troy, Michigan, on August 1st from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
We invite all of you to come and enjoy a day full of activities, which include boutiques, jewelry, tasty Indian food, Mendi or Hannah, dances and music, and lots of fun for kids of all ages and adults, too. We have food from local Indian cuisine eateries, and we also have items that are available for purchase that were brought here, especially for the Anand Bazaar, all the way from India. And so, we would really appreciate if you came.
Thank you. It's on this side here, here.
We don't have flyers because we are trying to be green, but information will be sent via email.
Okay, thank you. That's great.
And thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you. Good luck. That concludes the presentations, and we have no carryover items or public hearings, so we're going to go to public comment. And I, as always, indicate to folks, if you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask you to turn it off because it does affect our sound system. The public comment section is for all agenda items or items that are not on the agenda. So, if it's a postponed item, a regular item, a consent item, or a study item, or if it's an item that is not even on the agenda, this is the time for that, and the time limit is the five minutes. And I will call on the folks that have signed up first. And we have James Savage, who signed up to speak. I think you'll want to adjust the mic for, the little girl had it down there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of council. I was looking at the ballot proposal, and there's the one gives me a bit of a problem, and that is regarding the authorizing the funds for the smart bus service. And it leaves me not knowing which way to vote because, in principle, I have always been in favor of mass transit. But, from what I have seen of the smart bus service, all I see is a waste of taxpayer money. And for many years, and I have supported this system continually, for over 10 years, I've brought to the attention of council and to traffic department, the use of 45-seater buses with no passengers. And I've brought this up before, so I'm sure many of you, as you've driven around and you now look at these buses and you see how they're filled up. And very often, I would say, over half the time, there are no passengers, just the driver, and at the best of times, there may be four or five passengers. So, after years of observation, I estimate that smart buses operate at less than 5 percent of capacity, and this is wherever I look. When I am downtown Detroit at the Bus Depot, there is a smart, a stock for smart buses. I've never seen a smart bus there yet. But I see the city buses operate in the same way, with either no or very few passengers. So, it seems to me that this is just a total waste of money. Many years ago, I suggested a commuter bus lane along 16-mile road, and I suggested it be done with corporate-sponsored buses that would operate from I-94 right through to the Kmart and Seppio buildings. That was when they were employing thousands of workers. But nobody wanted to listen. Nobody was interested in mass transit. But now, we need money, so everybody should be interested. And even though, at the time that I was trying to push for this, General Motors was operating a bus from Pontiac to the Vansen, and it was stopping in the city hall to pick up passengers. It started off with anybody in the Vansen could get on the bus. Within two weeks, you had to be a GM employee because the buses were filled up, and they were operating another one on the east side. So, the need is there, you know, but smart is not finding where the need is. So, I figure the demand and supply is the basis of the free enterprise system, and there is a demand for a transit system, but smart is not supplying that demand by running big empty buses around the area. I think the management of smart should be fired, and then the new management, if they can't get the act together, then I think Oakland County should look at privatizing the system. We can no longer afford to fund these wasteful programs with money that we don't have. We are families in Troy. No longer can they afford two or three or more cars for their young kids. It's not there. A year, two years ago, a kid gets his driver's license, they either get the family car, or they go and buy the kid a car. That's not happening anymore. And so, these kids have got to find a way of either getting to work or even get out to looking for jobs, and the system doesn't help these kids. So, the way I figure, the smart system has failed, and more money will not solve the problem. We need accountability for every dollar we spend. I will also be calling on the county commissioners, and I hope that they can give me some encouraging answers. So, I would urge this council, if you have any weight in this matter, to lean on smart or on the county, so let's get some accountability here. Is this enough given? Right now, I would say we could send a cab for everybody, every passenger, and it would save money. But we're not doing that, and nobody is making the move. Nobody is trying to make it efficient. And you look around, you know that I'm not making this up. This is a fact. And I think probably, if any of you have the opportunity, to put pressure and lean on these people to get the act together and make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. The next person that signed up was John Witt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just want to talk a little bit tonight about the distracted driver ordinance that was passed at the last council meeting. I know you, city, put out this three-page document, clarification of the distracted driver ordinance on the website. And I looked this over, and frankly, after reading it, the only thing that clarified for me was how misguided this ordinance is. I want to address three specific concerns with the ordinance, and then one more general concern about even this council taking the time to pass this ordinance and the actual action itself. These specific concerns. As been stated about this ordinance, to inform drivers about this ordinance, there are going to be 40 signs posted at the borders of the city. So, basically, when people come into the city, they'll know that this ordinance is in effect by reading these 40 signs. Well, I mean, when one of the distracted driving behaviors is very clearly reading, including reading a map or reading anything, it can take your focus off the roadway. Won't reading one of these signs clearly be a distracted behavior? And also, if you have to put all of this, you need three pages to clarify what is and isn't distracted driving. You have to put all of that in a sign. Somebody's going to, the print's going to have to be so small, people won't be able to read it, or the sign will have to be so big that it'll really distract people from the roadway. So, once again, these signs are just going to be more distracting than when we're trying to enforce this ordinance. Really, the second concern is this ordinance is anti-business and anti-new residents. I mean, obviously, who is going to want to move into the city of Troy when their experience in the city is, I was in Sterling Heights, and I crossed Dequender, and I was on my cellphone, and immediately I got pulled over and got a ticket about an ordinance I never heard about, didn't know anything about. I'm never going to want to move to Troy. I'm not going to want to do business in Troy. That's my one experience with the city of Troy. Is that the message you want to send to newcomers or potential new businesses? You've got to remember, 120,000 people daily work in Troy, and out of those, only about 5,000 to 10,000 live in Troy. So, there's a lot of people who just work here and don't live here. They might not know about the ordinance. And the message we're going to send to businesses and employees and workers in the city is, okay, we're just going to try to give you a ticket if you do any of these distracted driving behaviors, which many are very ambiguous, a lot of interpretation involved. It's very anti-business, it's very anti-new resident, sends the wrong message, it's very unwelcoming, and it's not sending the message we want, we truly want growth. And the third is, the one thing that nobody's ever addressed, is the increased cost this is going to happen from law enforcement costs. For example, we're going to see, obviously with this ordinance, if there's so much distracted driving going on, we're going to see a lot of tickets, obviously, because apparently, there's so much distracted driving going on, we need this huge elaborate special ordinance. But then, when those tickets get challenged in court, we all know the police officers are going to have to go into court, and we pay court costs, we pay overtime. So, there's going to be an increased cost for the police department through the enforcement of this ordinance. Now, I wouldn't be bold enough to suggest that you're going to give us the information on what the overtime cost to do to this ordinance. Obviously, the council administration has been very clear, they don't respond to residents' requests when they do things. I mean, Mr. Savage, last meeting, requested a simple calculation of how much we're paying a consultant who's co-managing the city, who's completely denied and given no information. I mean, I don't think, it's very clear, the administration and council does not want to respond to reasonable requests from residents, so. Which I also find interesting, that you've added to the agenda that now there'll be a city council and administration reply to public comments. You want to be able to reply at council table, but you don't want the residents to be able to get any information. I don't think that's a very fair two-way street. So, overall, I think this ordinance is very unfortunate. I think it's misguided. I think with all the budget problems going in the city, and the fiscal crisis in the city, we took the time to pass this unnecessary, confusing, obtrusive ordinance. Just shows how out of touch this council is. And this is completely unnecessary. It shows your priorities are in the wrong place, and I think we should stop wasting our time on unnecessary ordinances and starting down to the real business of the city. Thank you.
That concludes those that signed up under this section for public comment. Did I miss anyone? Then we'll go forward with our, next is the response or reply to public comment. Mr. Zurland?
Sure. Captain Colleen Mott and Lieutenant Livingston have a presentation on this matter that they'd be happy to give to council and public to clarify this matter.
Okay, yes. Captain Mott?
And while they're approaching, I'm wondering, Mr. Miller, did Mr. Savage get his information requested last week about the consultant costs?
Yes, he did.
Yes, he did.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here to give you a brief presentation regarding this new ordinance. As background, Lieutenant David Livingston spent a great deal of time conducting research regarding this particular ordinance. And in fact, was ready to proceed forward with this ordinance in 2008. However, circumstances intervened, and it was kind of put on the back burner until now, which is when he had his earliest opportunity to look at it again. Our practice in the city of Troy is to give warnings when warnings are warranted for traffic violations, and citations when citations are warranted. And this involves a significant amount of discretion on the part of police officers. As police officers, we use our discretion almost on a minute-by-minute basis. There are a lot of laws on the books that are very broad in scope, and to be interpreted literally would be very problematic. So what we tend to do is enforce laws via citations when the citation is, or when the offense is very flagrant or particularly dangerous. We obviously do not enforce every law that we observe being broken. That's just not reasonable. Troy police officers are very trained, are very experienced and trained in recognizing all the various traffic violations to include traffic, or to include distracted driving.
The reason this study was done in the city of Troy is because of several studies that have been conducted over the past ten years at least regarding distracted driving. Distracted driving is not anything new. Distraction's been around for a long time. The use of cell phones in particular has been studied broadly over the past ten years. As I mentioned in the previous, previous meeting, the number of cell phones that are out there today, about two and a half times as many as were out there ten years ago. Plus all the applications that are on those cell phones now, to give access to the internet, access to your webpages and things like that, emails, anything, music. These phones do everything now. It just adds to the problem of distracted driving. People tend to do these things while they're, while they're driving. Conducting business, things like that. Those are kind of the things that are leading to this distracted driving. Talking on a cellphone is four times likely to cause a crash than not talking on a cellphone. And all we're trying to do with this ordinance is to educate people into that, those facts. Part of our education format is going to be using certain businesses, including the Traffic Improvement Association. Representative Jim Santilli from the Traffic Improvement Association has been helping me gather the statistics for this research. There's another, there's another entity called the Drivers Against Texting and Talking. You may have heard of them. They were associated with the Oprah Show in the springtime. Their message is, and we plan to use them for some of our educational efforts, is to get the word out that hang up your cellphone if you're driving. Okay? If you have to use a cellphone, use a hands-free device. Even though the statistics show that hands-free and handheld cell phones, there really is not a whole lot of difference between them as far as the distracted driving goes. Sixty percent of people who go from handheld to hands-free experience the feeling that, they feel safer talking on a hands-free device rather than a handheld device. However, the distraction is still there. It's all cognitive. Okay? Some of the statistics up there, younger experienced drivers. Some states have even passed laws indicating that younger inexperienced drivers are not allowed to use cell phones at all. And that seems to be a growing trend.
One of the questions that many of you have received, as we have, is why was this ordinance created? As most of you know, problem solving is a core value of the Troy Police Department. And the problem was identified clearly by Lieutenant Livingston, based on data that he personally compiled. And that is that distracted driving is a significant causal factor in traffic crashes in the city of Troy. Because, in our experience, driving while distracted is so widespread, education and enforcement efforts are in order. And as Lieutenant Livingston said, the Michigan Traffic Improvement Association was instrumental in assisting us with this ordinance. For those of you who may not know, the TIA assists more than seventy communities in the tri-county area. And we believe that they are instrumental in assisting us, our county, to be one of the counties with the lowest fatality crash rate in the country. I'd like to deviate just a moment from our prepared presentation to address the three concerns that Mr. Witt brought up. First was his concern that signs entering the city of Troy might be distracting for drivers. And I would submit to you that we have a number of signs already in place, traffic signs such as speed limit signs, do not pass signs, so on and so forth. And I would expect that this sign will be no more obtrusive than the signs that we currently have, which people seem to manage very well. The second concern that Mr. Witt mentioned was, I believe what he said was he was concerned that the minute somebody would cross over from Sterling Heights into Troy, they would be immediately stopped and targeted. What I can tell you is that is what the law says. And this law, like many others, is very broad, and is subject to interpretation and discretion on the part of the officer. I can tell you that a reasonable officer would, what a reasonable officer would do, given that scenario, and I'm using myself as an example. If I saw someone coming from another city into the city of Troy, absent, I would be, and I did not see any distracted driving behaviors. In other words, weaving in the lane within and without, outside the lanes, sudden stops and starts, delayed reactions to traffic lights and so on. I would not stop that vehicle. Now, if I saw those, that same set of behaviors, I would stop the vehicle with the thought that possibly this is a drunk driver or a distracted driver. If my investigation revealed that this was a distracted driver, I would likely cite them for distracted driving. So this is not an immediate, just because you're on a cellphone, citation, although the law does permit for that. If I don't see any dangerous behaviors associated with that behavior, and again, using myself as an example, as a reasonable officer, I may or may not stop that person. Personally, I likely would not. The third question, or the third point that Mr. Witt brought up was his concern that there'll be this huge additional amount of citations being written, which would cause overtime for officers and additional manpower concerns. I can tell you that among the metro area, our statistics indicate that we are in the very low end of ticket writing. I do not expect that the mere addition of this ordinance is going to change that significantly. We emphasize education over enforcement, and the statistics bear that out. So I don't think, I don't see that as an issue. And I hope I've addressed Mr. Witt's concerns with my responses. Another question that we frequently receive here is why this new ordinance, why not use the laws currently on the books? Which is a very good question, because we do have laws currently on the books. We have careless driving and reckless driving. However, careless driving carries three points. Reckless driving carries six points, and it's a crime. It's a misdemeanor adjudicated by a judge. This new ordinance carries no points, which, in my opinion, is appropriate because the emphasis should be on education and changing behavior, not punishing people. And this gives us a tool to do that without the point penalties that, over a period of years, will add up to a significant expense for motorists. Significantly more than an initial fine. So that is part of the reason. The other reason is, there's a trend around the country to legislate these laws, to impress upon people that this is dangerous behavior that contributes to injuries and fatalities. So that is why, why the new law. Did you want to address the current?
As stated earlier, the the reason for putting this particular law in one section was to keep it, I guess, I don't know, Mr. Witt thought it's a bit confusing, but actually wanted to put it all in one ordinance to make it so it's easier to find and everyone knows what it's about. This particular slide shows that the current law is, if you want to write someone for even failure to use due care and caution, there's still a two-point violation and a hundred and twenty-five dollar fine. Reckless driving, again, six points. It is an arrestable offense. Distracted driving throughout the country basically is not along those lines. Careless driving is what we currently write for is a two-hundred-and-five-dollar fine and three points. State law, driving while distracted is a hundred-dollar fine for the first offense, and two-hundred dollars for second or subsequent offense, again, zero points. The reason we adopted the texting laws of the state is so that any revenue that's generated from those particular violations go to the city of Troy rather than the state of Michigan. It's no different from any other laws of the state that we've adopted, whether it's a red light violation, motor vehicle, or motor carrier violations now. That revenue comes to the city rather than the state. The new Troy ordinance, again, if you're talking on a cellphone, it's a seventy-five-dollar fine. And let me just talk about this real quick. The way it's set up, we're in, we are an education and enforcement type agency. We'll educate the public first. We've done that through the media, and we've done that through the enforcement actions. Enforcement actions can be a citation, it can be a warning. With this particular ordinance, particularly with regard to the cellphone usage, it's going to be warnings. We're going to issue warnings. And for first offenses, just educate the public on the use of cell phones. Not just handheld cell phones, hands-free cell phones as well. The whole idea behind distracted driving is to let people, educate people in the knowledge that there's no difference really between handheld and hands-free. Slight difference is the fact that with a hands-free, you're not holding onto something where you can actually have control of the vehicle. Okay? Studies have shown, both simulated studies and naturalistic studies, and by that I mean studies found taking place from simulators and actual naturalistic studies that are done by people actually driving a vehicle in traffic. Hooked up with cameras, sensors, and things like that to show what these people are thinking, what they're doing. The naturalistic studies are the most realistic, and the most recent one was done by Virginia Tech, indicating that, a year ago, almost to the day, indicating that there's no difference between cellphone handheld, cellphone hands-free, other than the fact that people feel like they're driving safer. But there are no jurisdictions in the country that I'm aware of that have a hands-free law or an all-out ban on cell phones. This is the first step into getting people to realize cellphone driving is dangerous. So when we give that warning, it's about hands-free and handheld, and the fact that if you have to use a cellphone, use the hands-free device. Okay? Again, it's a seventy-five-dollar fine and no points. The reason it's a seventy-five-dollar fine is that's basically the, I guess, the average throughout the country for those states that have the hands-free laws. The driving while distracted, texting, again, mirrors the state. There is a fine for that. It's a two-hundred-dollar fine, no points. Other distracted activity, again, two-hundred-dollar fine, zero points. Okay? Those are the driving behaviors, again, texting is twenty times more likely to cause a crash, where cellphone use is four times as likely. So that's, the more serious offense is the more serious fines. Okay? Same thing applying to makeup or any other distracted driving behaviors that are dangerous, two-hundred-dollar fine. That's the reason for the fine schedule like that. Again, there are ten, eight actual states, and the District of Columbia and the Virgin Islands have handheld cellphone prohibitions. There are also local jurisdictions like Shelby Township, Clinton Township, even Detroit and Southfield have bans on handheld, but those are secondary offenses. Again, to violate, commit a violation before you get stopped for that. Shelby just conducted a study they recently completed regarding that, and indicated that there's a real need for some enforcement regarding cellphone use, particularly at intersections, people going through red lights. And they, one of our nearest communities. So there is, there is a problem there. They've recognized it. They've done a study just recently. I don't know whether they'll go for primary enforcement. I don't know. Again, our goal is to educate the public. What will happen is they'll get a warning. Those warnings attract. The next time you're stopped, if you got a warning, oh, there's your warning. There's a chance you might get another warning, but there's a real good chance, a very good chance that you get cited for it. Because you've been advised about it already, and decided to do something other than to obey the law, where that seventy-five-dollar fine bought a nice hands-free device for you. So our goal is not to target people just because they're talking on the cellphone. Our target audience is basically drivers who are driving on cell phones who may not realize the dangers at all. Okay? Again, Shelby Township, Clinton Township, Detroit and Southfield also have distracted driving, especially with regard to handheld devices. And the texting, we went over this last time, the texting law is, basically it mirrors the state law. The cellphone use, I just talked about the cellphone use, handheld and it's hands-free. Common distracted behavior, again. I know some people are really upset about the eating, and even talking about the drinking part, but we don't even mention the drinking in there, although in a sense, it is a problem. Eating is actually, you're fifty-seven percent more likely to get in a crash eating when you're not, if, you don't have control of the steering wheel than you are when you're not distracted. Eating is a problem. Drinking, if you want to have a cup of coffee on your way to work, it's not a big deal, but when you're holding out of the cup to keep your hands warm when trying to drive, it could be an issue. Okay? We would address that. Again, same thing. As long as you maintain a control of the wheel, eating and drinking is not a problem, as long as it's not an alcoholic beverage, just by the way. These are some of the distractions we see every day. Reading, reading, reading a map, writing notes, things like that. All of it constitutes distracted driving. And the language in the Troy ordinance mirrors that of other communities, whether it's the state communities that were mentioned earlier, Shelby Township, Clinton Township, all have, yeah, those in their ordinances. Detroit has theirs on their ordinances. Southfield, they didn't have anything specific in their ordinance, but the three out of the four do. This one here takes care of the, talks about pets and things like that. If you have a little small dog that sits in your lap, and you can see over the dog, it's not that big of a deal, but when you've got a golden retriever, a Labrador Retriever in your lap, and I've seen it, and my traffic guys have seen it too, driving down the street, it's a problem. Okay? Basically, it's just common sense stuff. Our goal is safety, not dollars. I've heard this before. We're, all we're trying to do is generate revenue. That's not the case. Again, this particular study started back in October two thousand and eight. We're going to have these money issues. It's put on the back burner because of the budget issues that we've been addressing, and it was pretty much resurrected last fall. But when the state was working on a distracted driving ordinance for the state, we want to wait and find out whether or not that includes texting, cellphone use, or whatever. It just handled the texting part of it. This slide here shows basically where the money goes. All right, for that seventy-five-dollar fine, if you're cited for holding All right, for that seventy-five-dollar fine, if you're cited for holding a cellphone, fourteen percent of that, or ten dollars and fifty cents, goes to the city of Troy, okay? The rest of it goes to the state or the court. These are not money, money-making ventures here, okay? Same thing with the other one, the, yeah, the texting are the, the most expensive part of the distracted driving ordinance. The city of Troy gets forty-eight dollars. The court gets a hundred and twelve dollars, and the state of Michigan gets forty dollars. Again, it's not, not something that's going to make the city of Troy rich just on, on writing tickets. Again, we're one of the lowest ticket-writing communities in the area, and we still have a reduction in traffic crashes because the Traffic Safety Unit and the officers in the city of Troy concentrate their efforts on traffic crash-causing violations, which distracted driving is. So, that's where we, where our focus is. Out there writing people for spitting on the sidewalk, we're not out there writing these, these laws that have been on the books for years that really don't have any effect on, on the traffic crash problem. But this particular law here will certainly go a long way in helping us to further decrease the number of traffic crashes in the city of Troy. Again, until October first is kind of a cutoff for, as far as giving warnings. Basically, for the handheld, really for the texting, it's going to be up to the officers. Same thing for the makeup, but as far as the handheld device, whether it's a cellphone, iPod, or any other handheld device, we're, we're on a campaign for, for educating the public, and that'll go till October first. Now, that doesn't say, doesn't mean that anyone after October first still can't get a warning. They certainly could, and that doesn't mean that anyone who's been warned in August and is still got a handheld device in September won't get a ticket. But our, again, our goal is to educate the public. We want to reduce the number of crashes related to distracted driving, okay? Any questions at all?
I have one question because it's come up before about the signs. The signs will be rather plain. Are they going to be like some that you've seen in other states or other communities? Do you have any idea?
I don't know what, what
The design will be?
The designs are going to be as yet. They're, I know they have some of the universal signs that get the cellphone with the serpent line through it, and that's something I'd like to talk to the signmakers about, see what's even out there. I, I really don't have any research on that.
Okay.
Part of it. I've seen those signs during some of my research, but as far as what it's actually going to read, I don't know. What we have to do first with those is, some of the city roads are city roads, some of them are county roads. We have to get with county, make sure we get their okay from them. Same with MDOT for I-75. Those things have to be taken into consideration before we take care of those signs. That's another reason why October first is more of a, of a
And what's the, what's the progress on contacting those that are teaching driver training through the schools and other?
As I stated, as I stated earlier, the distract, uh, driver, drivers against texting and driving, that organization, I spoke with them last week. They've already got in, made inroads with Sears and with Courtesy Driving Schools, both in Troy, and a couple of the driving schools in the area there to, they've even got a simulator that they're, they're going to use for those schools. They're trying to make it part of their curriculum, that they go through these simulators as part of their driver education experience. They've also got inroads with, made inroads with some of the retail outlets, the Walmart, they're trying to get with Somerset to see if they can distribute information from those locations and other venues as well, just to educate the public on, on the hazards of distracted driving.
What about through the schools?
Through the schools, they're also working, they're going to be working with, they're waiting on to get a contact person through the Board of Education to try to do that. They've already worked with schools.
Yeah, because Tim McAvoy apparently is not in, in that position now.
Okay. I know they worked with, they've been working with schools, districts, and other areas as well. They're a local organization, so we're making inroads into that as well. So, the whole idea is to educate people into knowing that, you know what, distracted driving, it's, it's an emerging problem, and it's something that we really need to get a handle on before it gets way out of line, so.
Are there any questions that your folks, council have, Councilman Balthamany?
Just a question, and, and I was asked, and I didn't know how to answer, and I also observed some behavior. I almost got wiped out by a FedEx driver eating a sandwich. I mean, I really thought you were making that up two weeks ago.
No, I had one last week, same thing, crossed the fogline about a foot and a half, two foot.
So, I guess my question is, you all did a, a great press release after we passed this two weeks ago. Did you specifically send that kind of thing to the professional driving people that we have, like the delivery services and those sorts of things in the city all the time?
That, I don't know. I know we have, we have websites through our, our Public Information Officer, whether or not that was extended, I'm not very sure. I know we're in a little bit of a transition here with Lieutenant Lutkowski's retirement and
Yeah, I know we are. I'm thinking that wouldn't be that difficult to send it
No, it wouldn't.
FedEx, UPS, D, all those kinds of people.
We have not targeted anyone specifically. It's on the, the website, it's on our Facebook page and so on, but I think that's a very good idea.
Thanks.
And we'll see that that happens.
Other questions? Thank you.
Mr. Witt?
Thank you.
Very good.
Do you have a question?
Well, I was actually going to add that, perhaps we could get something in the Secretary of State's office, too, yeah, make sure we get that.
Good idea.
Good thought.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, after the response, who replied to the public comment, we have no postponed items. We go to regular business, and there are no appointments for boards and committees scheduled. There is a request for closed session, if we could have a resolution for that, and if folks feel that there's a need. You're shaking your head, okay. Do you feel there's a need for closed session? You read the data that
I'm good.
You, we're agreeing with your recommendations there, Mrs. Blom, so we won't need to have the closed session, okay? All right. Okay, the next is a preliminary site plan review, file number SP-962, Inpro Insurance Group, Section 24, and Mr. Sevadon is going to present for staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. The petitioners before you this evening seeking preliminary site plan approval, and what they propose to do is eliminate the existing cross-access easement that was required by the Planning Commission when they initially approved the site plan for this site in nineteen eighty-eight. The, you can see the overhead here. The existing cross-access easement essentially provides, provides vehicular, vehicular access through the site, connects two parcels without having, without the person having to, you know, utilize, utilize frontage or utilize public roads to, to connect. So, the easement that they proposed to vacate basically starts at Big Beaver, goes north, goes to the west, and terminates at the western property line. The reason for eliminating the cross-access easement is what they intend to do, is they intend to develop a brick enclosure with an oxygen tank here, and the cross-access easement does not permit that. I would note that if you see the aerial here, Grace Christian Learning Center, daycare facility sits here, and there's a play area. Now, having said that, obviously, with an oxygen tank being located there, it's going to have to adhere to all building and fire codes related to the storage of, of oxygen. The Planning Commission considered this item on June twenty-second, and they recommended approval of the site plan conditional on, they, they okay the elimination of this cross-access as I, as I indicated earlier, that goes north and terminates to the west, conditional on cross-access easement that terminates the eastern property line. Again, that was a recommendation they made at the, at the meeting. The reason for this cross-access easement, and I'll show you another overhead, this is concept development plan for Big, for Big Beaver Place Plan Year Development. It, it received concept development plan approval in September of two thousand and seven, so almost three years ago, and the subject parcel is here, and the cross-access easement that the Planning Commission recommended approval for would go here and terminate here. You'll notice on the PUD parcel, there is a proposed cross-access easement that terminates at their property line. The applicant for this development has yet to submit a preliminary development plan or a site plan for this application. So, it was, received concept approval three years ago. Concept approval expires in two years. I don't know if they're going to submit a, a site plan in the next two years, or if it's even going to be the same as, as what was approved conceptually. I would also note, it's sometimes as simple as things are the most complicated. This is an overhead showing the site plan that was approved in two thousand for Grace Christian Learning Center. So, this is the property to the west, and the, this is the subject site here, and this was approved ten years ago, and the cross-access is shown, is here. This is Big Beaver Road, and this is the location of the cross-access. So, it's, it was intended to connect south of the building here. The only problem with that is there's a detention base in there. So, what we have is we have cross-access easements that are, that go like this, and they, they don't meet. So, the, the planning department report that was prepared for the Planning Commission recommended approval of the site plan as submitted with the elimination of the cross-access easement. The cross-access, it's hard for me to say cross-access, the cross-access easement that was recommended by the Planning Commission would potentially eliminate some trips on Big Beaver Road. And let me give you a quick example of that. If the PUD were, were to be developed as proposed, and again, the office is over here and the cross-access would be up here, you could potentially have someone who's driving to work along, heading west on, on Big Beaver, comes in the entry drive, and goes through the driveway. This is a coffee shop on Deli. Picks up a bagel and a coffee, and then exits the coffee shop, and then goes back up, uses the cross-access easement, parks at the office. What, what that would have done would have eliminated the person exiting on the Big Beaver, and then, or excuse me, entering on the Big Beaver, and then exiting on the Big Beaver. So, it actually would reduce the number of trips on Big Beaver. Not significantly, we're not talking about thousands of trips a day here, but it would eliminate some trips on Big Beaver. For that reason, our traffic engineer has no objection to the, the cross-access easement that was recommended by the Planning Commission. I would note that the cross-access easement would require the elimination of four parking spaces here in northeast, northeast corner of the property. Planning Commission also had the foresight to recommend a, a deviation of four parking spaces, and it recommended that a reduction be granted as per Section forty point twenty point twelve. Now, I would, I would note that on July twenty-third, on Friday, a letter opposing the Planning Commission recommendation for cross-access connection to the east was sent to city council members as well as members of city management by Christopher Caldwell, Caldwell, an attorney representing the owner of the property. Now, I would note that Section twenty-four point five zero point zero seven of the zoning ordinance provides the Planning Commission with the authority to require cross-access interior drives, or in other words, drives that will allow vehicles to move from one site to the other without entering the frontage road. Presently, there are hundreds of cross-access, access connections throughout the city. There's hundreds of them. Now, the consent, this, this property is controlled by consent judgment, and the consent judgment requires that city council shall have final site plan approval of all development of the land. So, for this reason, Planning Commission was only a recommending body. City council has approval authority for the preliminary site plan, including approval authority for the cross-access easement if desired. I want to stress, this is discretionary. You don't have to grant the cross-access easement if you, if you don't think it's, it's necessary. With that said, Madam Mayor, city management recommends approval of the preliminary site plan application, has no objection to the cross-access easement connection to the east as proposed by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Council have questions? Thank you. The information in the packet was quite clear, and the petitioners are asking for approval. The council, do you have questions on the matter, or are you ready for a resolution? Mr. Zerlike?
Your Honor, if I may, Councilman Fleming had asked me to share something with you on this matter. He said, unfortunately, I will not be able to attend Monday's meeting, but wish to express that I fully support this request as outlined in the letter for Mr. Caldwell. We need to be flexible to accommodate the tenants' needs throughout Troy as long as they are not unreasonable and do not pose a hardship or safety issue to neighboring properties. Based upon what I have read, this is a reasonable request. I am comfortable with Mr. Zerlike sharing my opinion at the council meeting. I regret that I cannot be present to express my opinion in person and vote in favor of the request.
Thank you. I think having the closing of the one to the west because the oxygen tank is important, and then keeping the one to the east open so that if that property develops, there, there is the ability to have that cross-access at the back. And that's what the Planning Commission had recommended in this resolution. Are we ready for a resolution? I, I don't know, did the, uh, well, it's not a public hearing, but the petitioners wish to say anything, and Mr. Goodman, do you want to come and say anything on this? We do have your letter. Thank you. And we know you've been trying to get tenants for the building for
For a long time.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for hearing us and giving us a chance to speak here. I am Bill Goodman. With me are Dave Goodman, my partner and son, and Alan Scott, our builder. And we're here to ask you to approve, as the Planning Commission has requested, the elimination, the vacation of the easement to our west that runs into the Grace Christian Learning Center building. We're also here to ask you to not accept the Planning Commission recommendation to have a cross-easement access on the east, and there's a couple of reasons for this that I would like to go into. First, I want you to know that Dave and I have been members of Troy, residents of Troy since nineteen eighty, thirty years this, this year. Our company, which is Inpro Insurance Group, formerly known as Expert Underwriters, has existed in Troy since nineteen eighty-six, originally on Fifteen Mile, and since two thousand and one, we moved into this building that we own as Goodman Investments Company on Big Beaver. We finally got the tenants, just in the past couple of months. This building has been approximately one-third empty since we've had it up. We obviously are taking a significant loss on that. We finally got two tenants, Oxford Hyperbaric Oxygen Treatment Center and Nurses Unlimited, who are going to fill up the building and, and occupy the rest of the place. If you have that information in the packet that we gave you, you would see in exhibits FG and H that all the people concerned recommended this plan be accepted without any precondition, and not until the Planning Commission meeting on June twenty-second was this second condition put on us to have to build or take an easement on the, on the east side. We think that the reasons that they have expressed for this are not valid for a couple of reasons. The abutting properties are going to be a combination of commercial and residential, as we understand it. There will be townhouses in the back end of that parcel that's not yet developed, and we are strictly office people. An insurance agency, a law office, an automotive engineering office, and the two new tenants that are coming in. They really don't lend themselves to going back and forth. And then the comment that was made that we'll have people coming in and driving in and getting a cup of coffee and a bagel in the morning, and then having to come back out on to Big Beaver to come into our office. Every different office in our building has its own kitchen or coffee bar. We don't need to go spend five bucks for a cup of coffee. We can go brew it right in our own kitchens, and that's true of every tenant in the building. So, we really don't think there's going to be a whole lot of traffic resulting from that particular area of people in our building having to stop in and then come back out before they go into our office. The other thing that we are really afraid of is that the people in the back who will be in the housing area will be using this as a thoroughfare to get out of that building without having to go down one of the two entrances that are planned for that property next door to us. And so, we just don't see that there's, there's a need for this from the people And so we just don't see that there's a need for this from the people who would be there. Their plan does have two entrances, one of which is a boulevard with one-way traffic separated by some landscape properties. So if anything, we might benefit by having a second entrance. We don't have a second entrance, and we don't feel we need it. So that's the purpose of doing this. Another thing that I hope you will consider is that in order to build this building in the first place in 2001, the Planning Commission required that we put up this five-foot decorative wall, which goes the entire length of the east side of the building, and it's a six-foot wall across the back of the building. That cost us $70,000 in building this building. And to my knowledge, it really hasn't done anything for keeping people out or even keeping us in up to this point. Now, to cut the hole in the wall, and to clear the four parking areas, and to put in the curbs, and to put in the necessary landscaping, we don't have a firm quote on this, but we're thinking it's going to be in the range of another $15,000 to $25,000. And we don't think that we should be penalized for doing this when what we have there now is to meet the city planning commission requirements. So I guess what we're saying is, we ask that you approve the vacation of the easement to the west end, which abuts the Grace Christian Learning Center, and they're agreeable to that as well. And we ask that you not require us to have an easement to the east end.
Okay. Is there any question for... Well, I have one, and other council members might have some others, too. If the property to the east were to develop in a different manner than what is already planned, but they haven't done anything on, would you foresee any reason for having access on the east with that abutting property? Or do you feel that being self-contained within your site is more important for you, for your uses?
For what we do, we're happy with the way it is now, and we don't see the need for us for having a second entrance. Now, whatever might happen there with some other potential developer, I would have to see what that would be.
Would there be any safety concern with the oxygen tank with having an access there? I know it's on the other end, but if people are going to be cutting through, I don't know.
It's going to meet all the specifications. I could have Alan...
No, I mean, if there were an access at the east end, which would make an opening there, do you feel that it is safer with having closed in, with having that...
It would prevent anybody from doing a drag race down the back of the building. That's possible.
I'm trying to look at it from all the different angles.
Right. My office, by the way, is right on that back corner, so if there's anything wrong with that oxygen tank, I'm going to be the first one to know about it.
I guess. All right. And other questions, council, for Mr. Goodman? Thank you. We appreciate you expressing that.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
I have a question for staff, if I might ask.
Yes.
And there are plenty of guys in the room who could probably answer this question. Mr. Goodman is concerned about having to punch a hole in his wall and create a driveway. It's my understanding that that wouldn't have to happen until the abutting property was developed. This would just be a recorded easement at this point. Or can we make it that way?
It was the intent of Planning Commission that the easement be recorded, but the actual physical improvements not have to be undertaken, the construction, until such time that the property is developed now. Typically, we get the construction to occur at site plan approval because we really don't have instruments available to ensure that the improvements are completed in the future. However, discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, the attorney who was in attendance indicated that he was confident that we could, there was avenues to accomplish that, to basically require the construction in the future when the property is developed.
And I guess I ask the question because having been on the Planning Commission when we approved Grace Learning, and those easements, they have changed, and this might too. So particularly as the mayor stated, should that PUD not materialize and be reformatted in some other way, then this may go unused. So I would hate to have, require anybody to go through the expense of a driveway to nowhere at this time. However, I do, I do believe in interconnection of properties, and so I just wanted to clarify that it wouldn't have to be done like next week.
Could I add to that?
Sure.
What typically happens if you've got, let's go back a few years when there was two vacant fields next to each other. Someone's got to be first.
That's right.
So the first, so you've got field A and field B, one's developed. You've got a cross-access connection that's constructed, but it terminates at the property line. However, it can still be used for parking. In this instance, we've got a $70,000 investment in a wall, and it's one thing to build a cross-access connection to nowhere if it's just that we're talking about a grass field and the expenses aren't so much. I can understand the petitioner's frustration with having to invest a significant amount of money into a wall to come down now when there's no assurances that it's going to be developed as proposed anytime soon.
Right. That's my concern as well, so, thank you.
Further questions, council? On this item? Councilwoman Kirwin? Were you asked for the floor?
Yes, I am. I'm thoughtful. I understand my colleagues, Councilmember Beltrame's points, having sat in the same position and looked at the same things. However, I'm somewhat troubled by some of the material we received, because when I read from the consultant and then read what the recommendation was in here, I was confused. And I, too, look at this and understand the importance of moving quickly so that businesses can come in, rather than looking at, well, in two years, we may still have some development on that plan. So I am more inclined, after looking at it all, to eliminate the cross-access easement requirement, even though that came as a recommendation from both the Planning Commission and from management. I would just as soon grant complete site plan approval without those contingencies.
Councilwoman Slater?
I feel the same way. I'm trying to think of a good reason to do this, and I haven't really heard one yet. To get a cup of coffee to go into the business doesn't seem like a good reason to me. I also support connection for safety purposes and flow and things like that, but I haven't heard that here tonight, so I'm leaning the same way. I don't see a reason to do this. I haven't heard one.
I think that most of our cross-access easement that we have put into place have been prior to having any kind of constructed wall being in the area. I'm trying to remember if there are some, that some of the areas where we've had the cross-access easement, it's really worked out to the benefit of all the businesses on all the sides, so that's why it's many times recommended. My concern is with opening up the wall and then really not, it's not really needed at this time. And so my inclinations, after hearing all the data, are to go with what has been suggested with the approval, but without the opening on the east side. Further questions or comments? Do we want to have a resolution then that goes in that form, and then we'll see how the vote goes? I'm assuming that the parking adjustment of the four spaces was also tied in with that, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the resolution would read without, subject to the following conditions, and those conditions taken out, just the beginning resolved. Is that correct, Mrs. Blom?
Yes, Mayor, if it is the council's decision to eliminate the requirement for the cross-access easement, then you could do that by just terminating after the, within the O1 zoning district.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mayor, I just also wanted to state for the record that one of the reasons why we do this at the time, it is a consent judgment, and this is really your opportunity to provide for that, and Councilwoman Beltrame is correct in that generally we wouldn't require them to be built right away, but the leverage is with the consent judgment, which is before you know. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear and on the record.
Okay. Right. Okay. All right. Would someone like to move a resolution then? Councilwoman Kirwin?
I can. I just want clarification one more time before I move it from the attorney, that this would then, both easements, even though I have the site plan approval right, I mean, the site plan right here, would I need to add any additional language? No. Okay. Then, Mrs. Blom? Be resolved that Troy City Council here by grants preliminary site plan approval as requested for the proposed Inpro Insurance Group Office Building addition located on the north side of Big Beaver, east of John R. in Section 24 with the O1 zoning district.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kirwin, seconded by Councilwoman Slater, that we approve the resolution as read with the conditions removed.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Slater?
That also include vacating the easement to the west also?
Yes. Yes. That's why Councilwoman Kirwin was asking about that. Okay. Discussion of the resolution? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Beltrame?
No.
Howarlag?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Good luck. That concludes the regular business, so we'll go to the consent agenda. Council, do you have any consent items that you wish to have exempted?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howarlag?
J4A.
J4A. Okay. Any others? And could we have a resolution? Approving? Yes. Councilwoman Beltrame?
Resolved that all items as presented on the consent agenda are hereby approved as presented with the exception of item J4A, which shall be considered after consent agenda items as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman Kirwin, that we approve the consent agenda item with all items with the exception of J4A, which will be considered after this. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Howarlag?
Yes.
Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
And Beltrame?
Yes.
Motion passes, and then all those items under J have been approved except for J4A, which we will consider now. Councilwoman Howarlag?
Question for management insofar as, are we, is it our intent to continue with in-house production of audio and video programming and the entire operation of WTRY in the foreseeable future? Or is that something that hasn't been brought to a conclusion yet?
Mr. Zerlik?
I plan on having the balance of all departments that have not yet been analyzed be analyzed by the International City Management Association. I'm meeting with them next week, and the manager's office, which now includes community affairs, is going to be part of that analysis. And whether we should or do go out for bid on cable casting will be part of that proposal. So I don't have the answer yet. I hope to have all the answers for all the departments, including community affairs, by Thanksgiving.
Further questions on J4A? Then could we have a resolution for approval?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
I would approve the resolution to award the audiovisual upgrades to the low bidder as printed.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrame, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Howarlag?
I'm provoking no, and it's not because I don't want it to go to the low bidder, but rather I would prefer to wait until the, until we come to the conclusion of our analysis of whether or not we are going to continue to operate this in-house. So, but I appreciate the memo that we've received. It certainly provided all the information that I needed as far as what the bid award was for.
Okay. Further questions or discussion? The vote, Mrs. Plata?
Councilmember Kirwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Shilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrame?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Then all of the J items have been approved, and we'll go to council referrals, council comments.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrame?
A question for management, and Mr. Savage mentioned the Smart Village, and it made me think, we operate our entire Medigo program with our community credits from Smart, so if Troy opts out...